Okay. Call a public hearing to order. Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam and on behalf of city council, I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing. That's a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read, introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has asked that a public hearing be held in order to get the public's view. On each of the bylaws, first we'll hear from staff of the city's planning and development department who will present a summary of the proposed bylaw and then each, with each bylaw, the floor will be open to anyone in attendance who wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given first opportunity to speak and then we'll open the floor. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications, but there are rules. First off, this is not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might be of a different point of view. So we ask each of the speakers tonight to please restrict your comment to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We are asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak will be able to do so. You're permitted to speak more than once if you've got some good stuff, but you've got to get back to the back of the line and we'll hear from you again. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. And to that end, we find it really helpful if there's no clapping, no booing, no cheering, no jeering, no heckling. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, any presentation that becomes abusive or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note that council can't receive any information after we adjourn the public hearing for an item. So if you have written materials or something you want to be included in the public record, you have to hand it to the clerk's desk before we adjourn that item. So before I call the third time for speakers to an item, please hand any written materials that you want part of the public record to the staff. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we have a regular council meeting and it will deal with a number of items, including the items on tonight's public hearing agenda. If however, during the public hearing, council, any council member requests more time or requests deferral of an item, we can consider the item at another time rather than tonight. So I'll now call Ms. Lord to introduce the items on tonight's agenda and the planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one is an application to designate the parry residence at unit number 5307 Begn Street as a protected heritage property, bylaw number 4457 2014.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jonathan Jackson, development planner with the city. The site is located on the southeast corner of Carche Avenue and Begn Street at the entrance to Laval Square. On June 13th, 2011, council approved the heritage revitalization agreement, bylaw number 4211 2011. The project has now been completed in accordance with the conservation plan approved with the heritage revitalization agreement. And here you'll see the parry residence in the 1910s as it was originally constructed and how it was found in 2011 in a rather derelict state. And here again, we see the parry residence in 1910 and after restoration in 2013. The proposed heritage designation bylaw will provide further legal protection in addition to the previously approved heritage revitalization agreement and ensure that alterations cannot be made to the exterior or the structure of the building without city's approval through a heritage alteration permit process. Staff are recommending final, all final readings of heritage designation bylaw number 4457 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. We have had a lot of inquiries with respect to the fact that this is really a rebuilt building and I'm wondering if staff could give a short 10-minute...
Short 10 minutes?
A short 10 minutes.
Which is it, short?
Well, it's a heritage building, so it should take a long time. A short presentation just about why it's still, even though it's significantly rebuilt, why it can still be a heritage building because it is rather confusing. Thank you. Maybe Mr. McIntyre?
Yes. Good evening, Your Worship and council, and thank you for that question. I'll offer a few remarks and then either Erica or Jonathan who've worked more closely with the applicant and are familiar with the file can jump in. First, and I think as Jonathan referenced, there was a heritage revitalization agreement was approved, I think it was a little over a year ago by council and that enabled the building in that somewhat derelict condition that we saw in the previous graphic to be restored, but also to be relocated on the site and some infill development on the balance of the property. Typically with the heritage revitalization agreements we've been using in recent years, there's been a couple down around Laval Square. There's another one we're considering down on Brunet where a heritage building or element is preserved and it's assessed and through that assessment is given some recommendations on how it can be retained and upgraded and brought up to modern building standards, but at the same time try to have an authentic restoration so it maintains its heritage appearance and character. In this case here, the property went through the heritage revitalization agreement process, was ultimately approved by council. It was following a public hearing at the time. Though we didn't recommend taking the step of placing it in a heritage designation bylaw. And that's really the subject of tonight's public hearing. Similar to a rezoning or an official community plan amendment, with a heritage designation bylaw, council is supposed to have a public hearing. So, and the reason for that was we wanted to make sure that through the restoration process, it was indeed successful. And I know there's some that take exception to that and question the restoration. It has followed the heritage consultant's assessment and recommendations. There were a number of elements that they were able to retain in the old house. Yes, it was really stripped down to the basic structure and then rebuilt from there, but rebuilt in a fashion to respect the original form as we can see in the graphic above here, particularly in recreating the large wraparound veranda and the exterior finish of the building from the nearly 1910s. So the building was brought up to a form based on the heritage consultant's assessment and recommendations that we feel merits consideration for heritage designation. Heritage designation is one of the highest levels of heritage preservation a municipality can place on a property. It really locks that property in with that heritage feature to maintain it and that sort of look and standard, you know, through time. If the property owner was to want to make changes, they'd have to come through the council and apply for heritage alteration permit. And so it really, hopefully it'll keep the character as pure and consistent with the heritage designation over time. So that's the purpose of the bylaw tonight. The building, a number of the building elements were retained and perhaps Jonathan could speak to that more knowledgeably. It has been shifted on the site, that's true, but we feel it's been brought back to a form and look that's largely captures what was there before. Now Jonathan, you want to add to that?
Actually, if I could intervene, just for council's information, the applicant intended to be here tonight, but unfortunately due to illness, he could not attend. He was planning to prepare precisely, Counselor Reed, what you're stating, and we do have his presentation and Jonathan is willing to provide that, make that presentation on the applicant's behalf in order to provide that overview of essentially the steps that he went through, the applicant went through to reconstruct the heritage building.
Good evening again. I'll just wait for it to load here. Oh, do I have it? Right. Okay, it's this one here? Yep. Here we go. I'm sorry, I'm trying to... Isn't she talking anyway? All right. So this is the presentation that the developer, Harriman Developments, has prepared to speak to some of the questions that he had heard had come up as part of this designation process. Through the whole process, there was a lot of design and planning that went into this. There was a lot of back and forth consultation between the architect, gradual architecture, and the heritage consultant, Luxton and Associates, in order to come up with a site plan that both accommodated the extra units on the site in order to give the incentive to be able to retain the structure on site as well as fitting it in site, on the site in a way that did it justice and kept its presence on that corner of Laval and Begn Street at the entrance to Laval Square. In doing so, it was decided that the building should be attached to some of the new units in order to avoid unpleasant architectural voids. It would be at a very small setback between the buildings. And in doing so, that also came up with some building code implications which involved having to rain screen the building and make it meet current B.C. building code. Go on the next slide here. A lot of the exploration that was done here involves some destructive testing at the early stages which actually found that most of the historic elements that you see on the building, that historic photo there, were still in place. Primarily, there was the siding that was underneath a rendering of stucco that had been put on the building at some later date. This siding was tested for moisture and rot damage and was found to be in really good condition and all reusable. Many of the original windows were still hiding behind these slats on the main floor, on the main floor, and those were taken off. At this point here, you can see they're already removed and taken to a heritage woodworker shop to be restored with care and attention, something that couldn't be done on site. They had had about 100 years of wear and tear at that point and required significant rehabilitation. As well, many of the existing front porch features were either in place on the smaller front porch that was, had been altered from the original larger wraparound porch. And what wasn't there, there was enough there to mimic them through replication to ensure that it was consistent throughout the whole building once it was reconstructed. The house was lifted off of its original foundation and moved approximately eight feet to the north and eight feet to the west. This was done by Nickel Brothers. As part of that, the basement story had to be removed in order to accommodate moving the structure. What was found, when you look at those pictures we had up earlier of the building, was that it had actually been altered. It's assumed in the 1930s following an upper story fire, which was what resulted in the wraparound porch being significantly shrunken size and the upper story being reconstructed in a manner that's actually quite different from what you see today. So once the house was moved into place, it was found that they had to do quite a bit of rehabilitation. They found some fire damage once they opened up the rest of the walls that hadn't been properly repaired to begin with. And this resulted in them having to sister all of the studs on that main floor as well as upgrade the floor system as well. They also had to add headers above the windows in order to accommodate adding that second story back on as it historically was there in order to make it meet current building code and be structurally safe. Once they'd framed this all back up, they brought the windows back to site after they've been restored. As you can see here, there they are with their historic multicolored painted glasses in the uppermost divided light panes of the windows. And here we have some photos that the developers provided of all these historic elements. We have the window frame and sill and the window sash here all dismantled, being restored and reprimed. And some of those original posts and sort of beam elements from the wraparound porch as well being there. You can also see some of the siding in the background that's all been reprimed and restored there. As well, the bricks from the historic chimney had to be dismantled for the move and those were taken away and acid washed and then coated and then brought back to the site and restored in their original place. You can also see in this photo here, the siding which is laying here in the garage at this time of the house, now back on the house in this photo over here. They had some temporary posts there and you can see some of the gray ones at the bottom of the original posts sitting there and then the new replicated ones that aren't primed. And those ones were all put in place to again return it to its original historic resemblance. And then finally here, we have photos of the project completed both at day and night. And as you'll note from that earlier picture we showed of it historically, back to the same look and appeal that it had back in the 1910s when it was originally constructed.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I hope that the folks at home that have written in sort of get the gist of it. This is a very expensive process to go through when you first start, even with the evaluation of the fact that it's a heritage building, never mind all the reconstruction and all the things you do. I think he's done a lovely job. It's absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I also see Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. And we also got some questioning from members of the public that asked, didn't quite understand why the developer would do this and what the developer got out of it, tax breaks or something like that. And it's, now it's my understanding, I'd like to, if it can be elaborated on here, as part of this, and the general manager of planning did mention that there was an infill project around that where a townhouse development was built, was, did the, does the developer go into something like this, spending all that extra money, that time and that care? Because in doing that, the developer gets permission to maybe add an extra unit or two into the infill and that's where it gets paid for? And I think that's the answer and I want the public to hear that, so.
Mr. McIntyre.
Your Worship, thank you. Yes, bottom line, that is correct. And that is really the essence of the heritage revitalization agreement process. It's really, it's an open framework for coming up with a site-specific, unique development that makes sense for that site. The city's objective going in is to try to, you know, preserve, give new life to a heritage feature building. The developer is looking obviously to try to get some economic return on that. So that's where we work through a process to try and enable the preservation and upgrading of a building. And then at the same time, so the developer can meet their objectives, their business needs, include other units on the property in a sensitive manner and that fits in with the neighborhood and fits in with the heritage building. Because you don't want to put something, as Jonathan was alluding to, that might dwarf or overshadow the heritage building. You want to do something that's sensitive both to the setting and the neighborhood, but also obviously to the heritage feature you're trying to preserve.
Thank you. And Counselor Hodge.
Yeah, I had a similar question and I think it's been answered. And I think I have some comments, but I'll save them till it's time to vote. So I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And now the public hearing. Are there any questions, or any comments from the audience, or any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? No? No? Okay. I'll declare this item closed.
Item two is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the properties at 635 and 645 Gautier Avenue from RT 12 family residential to RT 3 triplex and quadruplex residential, bylaw number 4461 2014.
Good evening, mayor and council. The subject site includes two lots located on the north side of Gautier Avenue, west of Hart Street. The site and surrounding area is designated neighborhood attached residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site into the north, east, west, and south is RT 12 family residential. The site currently has a duplex located at 635 Gautier, the western lot, and a single family residential dwelling located at 645 Gautier, which is the eastern lot. The applicant is requesting rezoning in conformance with the official community plan to RT 3 triplex and quadruplex residential to facilitate development of two quadruplex developments. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law number 4461.
Thank you. Mr. Speakers here. Begin with Satendra Mann from Archetype Design. Her address is 233 West 28th Street in North Vancouver.
No, there's a light on. Sorry. Hello, my name is Satendra from Archetype Design and I'm the designer for this project. And I'd just like to briefly introduce you to what we're proposing for these sites. So this project, it's for two sites on Gautier. And this is the site plan for the site. The sites currently just have access for parking from the street. There's no lane developed and there's no access to the lane. So currently, the city owns some land to the rear of sites on this block, but there's no access and no lane existing. In developing the concept for this site, the layout, city planners encouraged us to provide parking from the rear of the site and to provide a lane between the two sites to access that parking. So what we've proposed with this direction is a dedicated lane between the two sites. So this would be a lane which is public in nature. Originally, we had started out with it being a statutory right-of-way, kind of an interim lane until there was access developed at either end. But then we kind of arrived at a dedicated lane which will stay. And it's public in the sense that it provides access to these two sites for parking, but as well, the adjacent neighbors could also use this lane for access and future developments would link up to this lane and it would provide access for those properties. So just, I'll just go over the site plan. So we've, these are two sites, as I've said. And there's four units per site. They're roughly 18 to 1900 square feet each, three-bedroom units. And they're organized as duplex units, front to back. And we came up with this layout in order to minimize the massing on the street and to make them look like single-family homes so that they relate to the street's gate that's existing. I'll just go through the parking with you. So sorry, the duplexes, there's two per site and there's a central walkway access that provides access to the rear units. And to the, adjacent to each unit, there's a private yard. And I'll go over the parking. So the parking is primarily located to the rear of the site. The requirement for parking per site is 1.5 units, oh sorry, 1.5 stalls per site. And what we're providing is eight stalls, seven of them being regular stalls and one tandem stall. The parking is mostly at the rear and there's two garages and then there's surface stalls. And one parking stall is attached to a unit. As well, because we have this center lane, we've been able to close off the driveway accesses onto Gautier. And so we've increased the street parking so that there's now possible three stalls that you could have in front of each site. Oh, sorry. I'll have to tilt your head a little bit. This is, it's just the shadow study diagram that's done by the civil engineer and it shows the new sidewalk and it shows the three stall, the three parking stalls, parallel stalls in front of the sites. This is the landscape plan. There was no significant trees on this site and a few smaller trees are being removed, but there's replacement trees proposed by the landscape architect. As well, each unit has a very usable outdoor private space and there's lots of plants proposed. They're primarily native planting with some ornamental plants. I'll just go through a typical unit layout very quickly with you. This, these two sites, there's several owners. One of the owners are the Lizzy's who live at 645, I believe, Gautier. And they've been living at this site for over 30 years, I understand. And they're, this, that one of the units would be for themselves. And very sadly, Mrs. Lizzy passed away last week after battling cancer. And she, I'm sure, had a good idea that she might not be living here, but she wanted to provide, you know, something that her husband would find suitable as well. So this, this, this unit, which I'll just go through, incorporates some of the objectives that they were looking for, for their unit. And one specific requirement that they had was that the parking be attached to the unit so that they could easily get in and out of the unit. And as well, Mr. Lizzy's looking for something that's kind of low maintenance. And so he's interested in moving into a smaller unit with a small yard. And the layout of the main floor plan, for instance, is very open and it can accommodate some things for adapting to possibly aging in place, like a removable island and space where it's easy to move around in. So the units are, they have two floors plus a basement. And in the basement, I just wanted to be clear that there's no access from the outside, so the possibility of a suite is not really there. And upstairs, there's three bedrooms in each unit. In terms of the style and the character of these two sites, we decided to treat the two sites as distinctly different. And one of the reasons that we did this was to kind of minimize a sense of a monolithic sort of development and because they are in fact two sites. And there are different owners and they have, you know, different preferences. The Lizzy's wanted something more traditional, another owner liked the idea of something contemporary. So we decided to create this contrast and as well to relate to a diverse neighborhood with different people living in that. In terms of materials, we're using high-quality materials. And again, they're different in the two sites. In the more contemporary site, there's cedar siding and stucco and with some stone. And in the more traditional site, we've, we're using cedar shingles and hardy siding and traditional sort of column treatment. The units are, in terms of the side elevations, we tried very hard to minimize overlook and create privacy both within the site and minimizing overlook onto the neighboring sites. Sorry. I just wanted to also mention... We did have an open house for these projects to introduce the site to the neighbors what we're proposing. And there was five people that came. And the feedback was generally very positive and there was no objections to the site. And we've submitted, you know, their feedback that we got, which mostly there was just some need for clarity that people were looking for about what was actually being proposed on the sites. And I just wanted to summarize with, you know, we believe that this proposal will be a positive contribution to this neighborhood. We're using high-quality materials, trying to create something that relates to the neighborhood. In addition to this, the owners have... In addition to this, the owners have given up substantial portions of their site to, you know, facilitate this development. So I just wanted to point out that they've given parts of their side of the sites for the lane dedication, which is given away. And as well, there's a requirement for a lane at the rear of the site. And so parts of the site at the rear have been given as a dedication. And there's also a dedication along the front of the site for future street widening. So anyways, that's about what I have to say. And I just wanted to let you know that I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And as well, my clients are here also. This is Ravi, La Singani and Wilson and Mr. Lizzy. And so Wilson and Ravi might help me out answering any questions you have also.
I'd like to begin very quickly to offer our deep condolences. Je vous offre nos condoléances. This is a difficult time.
Yes.
Nonetheless, Counselor Hodge has some questions.
Yes, the, my question's mostly around the access and a couple around the parking. The lane, the new lane, which I gather, as you said, it's now a lane and not a statutory right-of-way. What's the surface of that? Is it going to be paved? Is it paving stones? Is it going to be grass with blocks? What is the surface?
It's asphalt. And originally, when it was a statutory right-of-way, kind of an interim lane, we had proposed pavers for that. And then it went, when it became an actual lane, that was going to be, it'll be built to city standards and so it'll be paved because it's sort of permanent.
And what do you, do you see advantages to going that route as opposed to the pavers?
Well, there's, I would think that there's less maintenance with the asphalt and as a long-term, you know, maintenance-free solution. But I think it's just that the city standards are, you know, such.
Okay, I'll, I think maybe then at this point, I'll direct my questions to staff. There's not a lot of green space in this development here. And we're creating what could be a courtyard in the middle here, but we're putting in a lane access, but I presume eventually the lane behind will punch through. And I'm just wondering about the need for, was basically an access route to that lane in the middle of the block. I could understand it if it were at the end and you'd want to have an end out so as not to prevent a dead-end lane. But I'm just wondering, the rationale about paving a lane that comes into a middle of a street when there's really, I get the temporary need for it, but, you know, I can see that when the rest of this neighborhood develops and everybody has garages at the back, we're now bringing traffic out from that lane into the forty-three hundred, you know, the, you know, right between these two houses instead of out to the east. And I'm just sort of, it's one of these neighborhoods in transition situations. I just, maybe if you could comment on where the roads will eventually fall into place and the need that maybe this won't need to be a lane down the road and could actually be just a common area or a walkway.
Through your worship, it appears that the proposed statutory right-of-way in between the two properties will also serve seven of the eight individual parking stalls proposed by the proponent. So even for their own purposes, that statutory right-of-way and access is necessary. As for the lane at the back, for the back property line area, it's an integral part of accessing their garages and as such, hard surface is necessary. And from the engineering perspective, in order to minimize long-term maintenance costs, an asphalt-paved lane section is preferable over two paving stones where the paving stones, almost without exception, over time, will show differential settlement, drainage issues associated with it. And in many instances, weeds will grow in between the paving stones and makes it very difficult to maintain, expensive to maintain, or it will be unsightly and will provide potentially a tripping hazard, which is obviously liability. The longer-term intent for the lane is that as developments will take place and opportunities arise, we will request to complete that lane at the back of these properties.
And I guess my follow-up question is, is that I understand that the city would prefer a paved lane, but if we were not the owner, and I'm sort of sensing that maybe this is where the discussion went, it went from a statutory right-of-way maintained by the owners to a lane which then becomes the city's responsibility. Does that sort of when it changed from pavers to pavement?
My understanding is, and I ask my planning colleagues to correct, that the access between the properties is a statutory right-of-way, meaning that it's owned by the private property owners, whereas the lane will become public property. And so, yes, that would warrant a different surface treatment.
So this is now proposed to be a lane that the city would own as opposed to a statutory right-of-way that the owners would look after.
Through your worship, just for clarification, the statutory right-of-way would actually be maintained by the city, though owned by the, essentially by the applicants. The reason that we proceeded with a statutory right-of-way, just for further clarification, as opposed to a dedication here, was because of the resulting lot areas of the two properties. It would not have been sufficient for them to have actually been able to proceed with the development if there was dedication.
Because then it would have counted as the property would have been lost. And I guess, and there's no potential for the completion of the road out to Hart or the lane out to Hart instead? I see there's one piece here, I guess the piece of Gerard that sort of sticks back and I guess that would create just sort of a narrowing pinch point. I'm just sort of thinking that as this development proceeds, that I would really, you know, prefer to see the traffic going in and out off of Hart at the back as opposed to coming through a new lane in the middle of Gautier.
I think that is the long-term intention, is as these sites redevelop under the neighborhood-attached residential using the RT3 zoning, it would give us opportunity as each of those sites develop to actually go proceed with improving those lanes and have that connection out to Hart. The other issue that was of concern to transportation planning in this instance was not just the exit out to Hart, but because of the length of the lane that's within this block, it was felt that it was appropriate to have another alternative exit from that lane, not just an exit onto Hart, because essentially what you have is a very long, one-way, one-access, one-exit system. So it seemed appropriate to have a secondary exit off of that lane system onto Gautier.
And I agree, you should want to be backing out. But anyway, eventually, when 615 and 623 all subdivide and presumably continue the lane, we've still created a dead end. It would make more sense if this were the last house on the street than I could see needing the access. But we've created one in the middle and presumably, we're going to do the same at the end of the street and now we're going to have a whole lot of little feeder lanes coming in and out of there.
You wish, if I could, it's a really good question and we wrestle with this, excuse me. And I think as Counselor Hodge noted, it's in transition, like the lane system exists in part and dedication's out to Hart, but it's not physically there. And there would be additional dedications, a widening of that lane in construction to complete that system, at least out to Hart. Certainly running it southward or westward to Highway One, you're correct, it would make for a long dead-end lane. And typically, what you'd like to have is a lane system with access points at both ends for dual means of access. I suppose in the fullness of time, as those other properties develop, we would monitor that and see if there's the opportunity to add additional access to have it more balanced over its length. And, you know, conceivably, in the fullness of time, if there is other access points, this mid-block access that's now covered by a statutory right-of-way may not be necessary. So that's the sort of thing that would have to be evaluated over time. So I guess it's best described as an interim solution to enable access to the back, widen out the existing lane, which does a benefit for these properties plus the properties to the north. And hopefully in time, as that neighborhood evolves, that lane system can be supplemented and additional accesses off that and to the main roads can be achieved.
I, you know, I'll talk about this later, just my concern about, you know, pavement, more pavement. And, you know, the way the houses now, the two buildings are now designed, they have garages on there. So you're always going to have to provide a permanent access to those garages. If this weren't being designed with two garages on the side, then you could say this is an interim measure that in thirty years, we could put down pavers, put down grass, make a green street, and you could have benches and things sitting in there because there's such a lack of green space and we're putting down pavement where, you know, hopefully it's not going to be needed in thirty years when we punch the full layout. So I would say, that's why I was curious about what the long-term is, is this is something that can later be de-dedicated and become a green space or a, you know, a green walkway through there, not necessarily a piece of asphalt in the middle of a street.
Your worship, again, it'd be a little bit of speculation, but I think that's quite true. If the need for this lane, this mid-block lane access wasn't there anymore, and I think as the general manager of engineering has pointed out, if it's part of the city's lane system, we're better with asphalt than with pavers because pavers are just that much more problematic over time. If that public access lane wasn't necessary in time, if the land was to revert back to the property owners, they might want to do something much more creative. They may want to just have a paved driveway, a paver driveway, the front half and, you know, additional open space at the rear. So there would be options at some point in the future if the lane system can be added to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sakura.
Yeah, thank you very much. On 635, okay, we'll talk about those first. How big a units are they? How many square feet can each unit?
I have the numbers right here. Unit one is eighteen eighteen.
How much?
One thousand eight hundred and eighteen, so eighteen hundred square feet.
Thirty-two hundred square feet.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred square feet on those.
Yeah, the first two units are eighteen hundred and the unit three is two thousand and fifty-seven, but that includes the parking, the garage. So that's why it's larger. And then the fourth unit is nineteen hundred square feet.
And on the six forty-five, how many square feet?
It's the same.
The same, okay. No basements?
No, they all have basements, but there's no outside access to the basements, so just window wells.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Linda Chudley, 615 Gautier. Ms. Chudley? Linda? Nope. How about Kelly Cutler, 615? Kelly Cutler? Is anyone here from 615 Gautier? Nope. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item three is an application to amend the citywide official community plan bylaw and the city's zoning bylaw to revise the land use designation and zoning of the properties at 1503 and 1509 Coast Meridian Road, bylaw numbers 4462 and 4463, 2014.
Good evening again, mayor and council. The site is located on the east side of Coast Meridian Road, north of Harper Road in northeast Coquitlam. The site is designated large, large, single-family residential, environmentally sensitive, and development reserve in the city's official community plan. That was on there. The zoning on the site and to the west is RS2 one-family suburban residential. The zoning to the north and east is A3 agricultural and resource. The zoning to the south includes RS2 one-family suburban residential, RS8 large village, single-family residential, P1 civic-institutional, and P5 special park. The site is currently vacant. The applicant is requesting to amend the official community plan, land use designation from large, single-family residential to large, village, single-family residential, an environmentally sensitive area for a portion of the site, and to rezone the same portion of the site from RS2 suburban one-family residential to RS8 large village, single-family residential, and P5 special park. This would facilitate the subdivision of thirty RS8 lots and three remnant RS2 parcels, the establishment and protection of a streamside protection enhancement area, and a nature trail along the southeast side of Hyde Creek Tributary 2C. And we have our two bylaw schedules here. Staff are recommending all final readings to OCP amendment and rezoning amendment, bylaw numbers 4462 and 4463, 2014.
Thank you. I have one speaker registered, Gordon Verall. Farrell? Sorry, Gordon Farrell, my apologies. Gordon lives at 1508 Martin Street in Coquitlam. Welcome, sir.
I reside on Martin Street, which is on the top of Burke Mountain. My family has lived there for over thirty years and I take a great interest in my community, particularly when it has to be within my immediate neighborhood. The item three property in discussion at 1503 and 1509 Coast Meridian are two hundred meters as the crow flies from my property. We both share the same portion of Hyde Creek and we both share only one road of access, that being Coast Meridian. As noted, I have always taken a keen interest in the going-on in my backyard. In February 1997, the city of Coquitlam started a study of the planning department and undertook a new official community plan for northeast Coquitlam. This study consisted of meetings involving Coquitlam staff, some council members, northeast Coquitlam residents, and contracted planners. I and some other Coquitlam residents requested to be included within the Coquitlam Plan Advisory Committee, but we were advised that there was already enough members in that group and that even though a review of many of the attendance sheets would show that many of the members did not attend frequently, we still wished to be involved. The CPAC committee, as it was known, did allow for guests and I, along with many of my non-CPAC members, attended most of the meetings. I personally have three three-ring binders and an apple box full of documentation pertaining to all of those meetings. The general result of after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and a tremendous effort by the CPAC committee and the guests such as myself, a document was generated and the draft plan to that document was produced in April 1999, issued in May. In the draft plan, one of the documents noted stated that, I quote, "The overall goal of the plan is to provide general framework which balances the needs of a rapidly growing area and the need for protection of the enhanced areas of high environmental sensitivity. The plans proposed encourage the orderly development of a livable community that provides opportunities for a diverse mix of housing, commercial, retail, community leisure uses, and a strong orientation to transit while recognizing and protecting areas of high environmental sensitivity and the areas agricultural and recreational land use." The official community plan was published in May 2000 based upon a twenty-year build-out with 5,600 dwellings, housing an approximate 24,000 people. The overall theme of this was to make it a green community. To date, most of this documentation has been used as a general guideline, but certainly not set as a hard and fast rules. At every portion of the northeast Coquitlam development that I have observed, the contractors have requested and in most cases received increased density approvals. have requested and in most cases received increased density approvals, and the mixture of housing is nowhere near what the Schedule C planning map showed. This is one of the documents as published by the city of Coquitlam. I see few single large family dwellings in Area D, which were supposed to consist of up to 60% of such dwellings. The same observation of the density increases in areas E, F, and G can also be seen. The higher up the mountain you go, the more environmentally sensitive the land becomes. The property in discussion has been identified as steep-sloped, containing portions of ESA classified lands, and is deemed to be suitable for one-family suburban and single large single-family residential purposes. And there's also consideration for a, quote, "park," unquote. This area is too sensitive for anything other than large family detached family developments. The area is steep-sloped, treat property, and needs to be kept as undisturbed as possible. Large lots with well-placed houses that consider the terrain will not negatively impact this sensitive land. Higher-density developments will be more taxing upon the land, the runoff, and the development as envisioned by the Coquitlam planning. Further and very important to note is that the Hyde Creek corridor should never be considered a park. It is an ESA-zoned water course area that is governed by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. I should know that because I have previously noted Hyde Creek passes through my lot. I do not want any influence from any upstream residents. The whole northeast Coquitlam development was supposed to be a green development complementing the natural backdrop of Burke Mountain. The only green thing about the total clear-cut, high-density housing that I have seen so far is the occasional green pigment on the vinyl siding on some of the new homes. Please do not accept the request for the increase in density on this lot, and please do not ignore and respect the protecting of the upper portions of Hyde Creek. Thank you very much.
You. Counselor Zerillo.
I was wondering, Mr. Verell, I was wondering if I could see your Schedule C.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The Schedule C.
Schedule C.
You've had an original one there.
You wish to see that?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
You can have it. I'll give it to you.
Thank you so much.
I want it.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Reed.
Thank you. I'm going through lots of documents that I have here. Mr. McIntyre, perhaps? I'll just wait till Counselor Asmussen's finished. Mr. McIntyre, the RS8 that I'm seeing on Attachment five and the number of lots, how does that vary from what we originally had planned for that piece of property that's owned RS8? Shown up on the screen now. What's the lot differential? Usually I get something that tells me and I can't find it if it's here.
Your worship, the RS8 zone that's proposed with this application, in a way, it's a little bit of a hybrid proposal. They're going with the RS8 because that would meet the minimum lot sizes. The lot widths that are proposed are more consistent with the RS9 width and...
Which is larger?
Which is wider. And in fact, that was the approach that was taken with the subdivision to the south. It goes an RS9 width, and perhaps Erica can give us that number in a moment, but it doesn't have the depth of an RS9 lot, so it's a little shallower. So in the end, it has the width of an RS9 lot, but it has a larger lot area than an RS8. But on that basis, they wanted to apply...
So it's an eight and a half?
Yeah, sort of, eight and a half, if you will, yes. And so that was the proposal. Based on that and with the road layout, it resulted in the 30 lots, so it's a...
What was the original estimate? I mean, none of these can be perfect because we sort of did them from a high-flying plane.
I'd have to check with the file manager on that number. It's less than what could have been based on the strictly RS8 zoning with the narrow widths, but let me just check on the original lot yield. If I could, your worship, perhaps from the Johnsons pulling that information out of the file, just to note, too, that the subject properties have this oddity of being partially in a neighborhood plan area, the Smiling Creek neighborhood plan area, and partially out. And that sort of explains the transition of these lots.
Yeah.
The other thing that's been done through this application is the, even though it says P5, that those really aren't parked corridors, those are the repairing corridors that were identified by the applicant's qualified environmental professional, which in fact end up being larger and wider than what was envisioned under the original neighborhood plan.
And I understand that. Apparently, there's more being built in the RS8 part than was envisioned, and that's just what I'm trying to get is a count.
Okay.
Through your worship, yeah, I understand the question, Counselor Reed, and certainly can understand for the confusion. The RS9 lot width, just for further, to add on to the other question, is 13.5 meters is the minimum lot width for the RS9 as opposed to the RS8, which is 12 meters. There was a submission submitted by the applicant previously with an RS9 proposal, and really it depends, there are variations on the theme because of the road layouts that had been modified during the course of the application. But the layout that I see here shows a yield of 30, so there essentially is no difference.
No difference.
No, there really is no difference.
Than when we first did it.
Yeah.
Were same yield.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you. Same yield.
Counselor O'Neil.
The last speaker raised concerns about environmental protection, and I wanted to get confirmation about my interpretation of the amount of land that is being set aside. He talked about it shouldn't be a park, it should be green space, but it's my understanding there's a park dedication as well as the SPEA that's right beside the stream, which is pretty substantial. And there's actually two bits of Hyde Creek, Hyde Creek Tributary 5 and Tributary 2C, which you'd see on Attachment 5 here in your big package. So is my interpretation correct that it's the, there's quite a buffer around Hyde Creek where it's not only just the streamside preservation, but also a park beyond that? Is that correct?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. There is a substantially wider environmentally sensitive area than what was originally shown under the neighborhood plan. This is simply a result of the fact that through the qualified environmental professionals' repairing area assessment report, further established where that boundary should be, and the boundary is much wider than what was originally envisioned under the neighborhood plan, and it also includes the trail portion of that under Tributary C, in addition to the SPEA.
Then I understood it correctly then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, your worship. Looking at lots 1 and 23, have some similarities to me to lots that we've had people come and apply for, setback variances on in previous subdivisions. Are these those lots on which you could build a house similar to the houses contemplated for this without setbacks, without variances?
Your worship, perhaps while the staff are conferring on that one, that's a good question, too. We're finding with some of the subdivisions up there, particularly getting into some of the steeper terrain and meeting the various zoning bylaw requirements in terms of portions of the building setback and other areas sort of setback from the setback line, we would trust the developer, and we would check this through the subdivision review to make sure that the layouts that are proposed, the widths and depths in that would work with typical single-family lot designs. I guess the challenge is that sometimes the design tastes change over time, and we'll see people coming in with slightly different designs they'd like to try on a lot. If it doesn't meet the zoning, then they're looking at a development variance permit. It is something that we monitor on an ongoing basis. We've had some conversations, particularly with the developer to the south, that was the Morning Star property. They've had some challenges, so we have those ongoing discussions with them. Do we need to go back and revisit some elements of the zoning bylaw? Do they need to be thinking a little bit more carefully in some of their designs? So it's a little bit of a give-and-take process.
Okay, well, I would suggest that developers should be wary because I understand the desire to maximize the lot yield. But on the other hand, maximizing the lot yield and then at a later date coming for setback variances on the problem lots at the ends is not something that I'm going to look on favorably. And my other question is, this is usually Counselor Reed's question around parking. On Attachment 7, we show parking stalls on the east side of, presumably will be still called Dayton. Are those, is the land to the east side of Dayton presumably is up for development at some future date to some degree? So is it appropriate to consider the existence of those parking stalls in looking at the adequacy of parking on this development?
Well, I don't go to hear that.
Then why did we show it?
I'm sorry, your worship, we're trying to call up the Attachment 7. It might have to be rotated here. No, we'll just lean.
I think it's just a street, count, a street parking count.
Okay, there, I think we're, we got the Attachment 7 illustration up in the right orientation.
We have half a dozen parking stalls shown on the east side of Dayton, which presumably means that we're to consider them as, how adequate is the parking?
Right.
But someday, somebody else may wish to park there. Right?
This is true. Along that frontage, there are some side lot lines, as you'll see on the west side with the subject subdivision. What happens ultimately with those lands to the east, the sort of thing we'd be looking into that through the northwest visioning process as to what the lot layouts might be in that area. So yes, in time, there could be fewer parking stalls on that side of the street with new development and driveways being added. It would depend largely on the orientation of those lots, whether they be accessed from the other side, whether there'd be a lane perhaps through there. So there could potentially be some loss of those parking stalls on that east side of that Dayton, but then again, it may not, depending on how those adjoining lands are developed. What we're trying to do with these exercises, I know this has come up previously on a number of occasions with the northeast Coquitlam subdivisions and that, is we are really going through a more rigorous exercise with the applicant and their designers, just looking at what the parking potential is and trying to optimize that. And so that's what these attachments resolve from, is just going through that analysis.
But in any analysis I was doing, I think I would ignore those parking places because one day there are people on the other side will be contesting for them. Thank you.
Counselor Hodge.
On the topic of parking, I'm looking at lots 16 and 17, and I'm looking at the space between the letdowns on 16 and 17, and that looks like it's a wide spot there. And forgive me if I'm counting every single parking space, but in Burke Mountain, they fight for every single parking space. So I'm just wondering, is that parking space, but that normally is, you know, without the scale here, but the space there looks the same as between 15 and 16. I'm just wondering, is there a parking, is that space between the letdowns big enough for a parking spot there? Between 16 and 17?
The answer is probably no, but it will be used.
No, because there's a fire hydrant there.
Through your worship, the analysis included looking at our on-street parking bylaw as part of this exercise to ensure that all the parking stalls being shown would meet the on-street parking stall requirements for the length, including the distance that would be required between parked vehicles. This particular stall was likely just shy of being able to meet that requirement.
Because I look at across, because I look at across the street, and those spots look smaller, so you probably couldn't put a car in there. And yet, I know, that's where I'm going, that's where I'm going. But I look at this, and it looks like a rather large spot, and across the street are very small spots. But beside the large spot, I see a fire hydrant. And I'm wondering if the fire hydrant were on the other side of the street where the small spots are, would we gain a parking spot? As I said, we count every single spot up there, and I hear about this, is why are the fire hydrants on the side of the street where we allow the parking instead of putting the fire hydrants on the no-parking side?
Your worship, that's a fair question and comment on that. My understanding is that they go through a pretty close review of this in trying to optimize the number of on-street parking spaces potential. I guess you're really, you're juggling, you're balancing off a numbering of a number of objectives, you know, what side of the street the hydrant should be on, the spacing between hydrants and that. So they're trying to balance between sometimes competing servicing design objectives. We can certainly take that away and discuss it with our colleagues in development servicing and engineering to see if that is the better location for the hydrant, again, with the mind to trying to optimize the on-street parking spaces.
One more spot, and we'll hear about this in five years, is why don't we have that extra spot? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Through to Mr. McIntyre. You know, we were talking about the parking in the northeast, and we were out on the site a couple of times, and we were talking about more pairing of the two driveways between them to add in. And when I look at this design here, I really don't see much pairing of driveways between houses. And if we were to more pair the driveways, you know, having it together, you could gain more parking along there. And we, I thought we were looking at that throughout the northeast as a way to increase on-street parking because the problem we have is when you take your three meters away from each letdown, so it virtually leaves no parking. And if we could have them together, like one house driveway to this side together, you free up more parking. And just going on the issue of parking, I thought I would be one way in increasing street parking in front of all these developments.
Your worship, that, too, is in the bag of tricks, looking at trying to optimize the number of on-street parking spaces. The challenge, though, again, on a sloping site where you have a road at an angle like this, and this gets back also to the preferred design of the houses. If you have the driveways paired, that means you're coming in on one lot on the low side of the lot, which is often the preference because they can come in, but you're coming on the high side of the other lot. And so it dictates a different building design, so your driveway and your garage are perched up high relative to the house compared to the one next door, where the driveway and garage could be into the ground and the house above it. So there is some resistance from the developer and the designers to have them paired in a sloping location. On a flatter and flatter terrain, that makes more sense, wherein you can see there's six and one half dozen, though it doesn't make too much, make a difference. But we do face that problem on the sloping sites. The one thing that just came to mind, and I know we've had this discussion with transportation planning staff, is in part, it's, and these drawings here are based on bylaw compliance. Under the city's bylaw, I believe, there's a three-meter-shi zone from each side of a driveway letdown.
Correct.
Which is pretty generous. And I think that was one thing I've heard transportation planning staff say, that they would reconsider that, think about that as a possible bylaw amendment to, again, optimize... the amount of, you know, potential space for on-street parking.
Yeah. But, so, these here that are bylaw compliant doesn't mean that the developer then may choose to pair up some of these if the staff works through the, because this isn't a development permit, this is the zoning application. So, we still have the opportunity that this will come, that they can work with staff, depending on the grading of each area, to increase the ability for on-street parking.
Certainly, Your Worship, we can convey that through to the applicant, depending on the council's consideration of the bylaw, as another possible measure to add to the number of on-street parking stalls. But as I've said, sometimes there is some resistance to that because then it starts dictating a certain design approach for their single-family housing, their house that they're, may not be in favor of.
Well, I think sometimes on a sale point, they'd be in favor of parking. I think, as we know up there, that's an issue. That could be a good sellable issue for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item?
I'm Robert Shore, 3409 Harper Road. Does the projector work?
Yeah.
Yes. In a minute.
I'm the neighbor immediately to the southwest of the development. I noticed that there are two creeks missing off of this plan. The one creek is located between lots six and seven. The other creek is located between lots three and four. The one creek between lot six and seven is responsible for this disaster here. It caused great erosion to the boulevard in front of my property on March the first of last year, and caused great erosion to the property immediately to the south of me, the townhomes. The other one, I do have a large site development drawing. It's a city drawing, H A R P underscore T R seven. It indicates the creek that goes onto the city's property that's being routed down the side, and currently, they're constructing the water reservoir, and they're ponding the water at that point. So, those two items are missing. I indicated that, I believe the due date was the eighteenth, when I sent an email of December. Unfortunately, what I got in the mail as notification to the public hearing was not this nice color drawing, so I wasn't aware until today, when I came to City Hall, of this nice color drawing. The kind woman at the desk was able to print it off for me. So, one other issue is this corner right in here, the proponent of the development went ahead and put a series of manholes in place. He did work in the creek there, which is a very sensitive area, as Mr. Veroll indicated, during the late September, October period. And I don't really think that that qualifies in the window that DFO would allow, but I'm not sure. That would be something to be checked out. But I was, he wanted to get cooperation from me to use my driveway to access his property because obviously, he's got a problem there. The problem is that this property really is kind of hemmed in. It's really difficult to develop. It's a triangular property, and it's got properties to the north, properties to the south, the city's property to the south as well, as the Morning Star property to the south. So, you've got this access road right here, Dayton, that you're probably familiar with, and that particular road you have to cross over a creek. Now, that creek, in order for Morning Star to develop it, had to be moved. Morning Star wasn't going to cross it, even though there was a culvert there. My family formerly owned that property, and there was a culvert across there. So, I'm not sure why they couldn't cross it, but they actually moved the creek to make their development. These people are going right across an environmentally sensitive area with the roadway. Moreover, he has a, or the proponent has a park in here, which is kind of like a park trail. But where does it go? It goes to the development reserve to the top, and to the south, there's no access to the south. It's blocked by my property there. It seems like this developer didn't bother to check with his neighbors as to how he could remedy some of these problems. And so, I really think that the developer should be told that he needs to work with his neighbors and find solutions that work for everybody there. I'm not against development. I think growth is good when it's, you know, in check. And I really feel that this developer hasn't communicated with either myself to the south and my family, or to the neighbors to the north, because obviously, he's hemmed in in this corner here and that corner there. The access is very limited. So, I think he probably could have made a bigger project out of this if he had have been more communicative with his neighbors. So, that's basically my point. I think that council should recommend that this be sent back for rework, and the developers should do their homework. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Just through to staff, Mr. McIntyre, on a couple of, some of the issues raised. Now, there's a, an environmental assessment done of this whole area, so there's the spi area, but there's also the development permit environmental area. So, I want to get some clarification, some of the concerns about water courses on six and seven. Were they notified in a report? And what was, what was done with them? What was channelization? Because there must have been, I would, if there is, there must have been a staff report and the mitigation factors around that. Have they been followed? The other, two other questions that he raised, I want to find an answer for, is the trail that they're proposing comes to his property, and if it dead-ends there, people are just going to be dumping onto his property without, and all sorts of issues there. So, how do you design a trail that a neighbor doesn't want? And are, what's going to happen to his property when he subdivides? Are you going to force a trail onto his subdivision? Or how are we going to deal with that, that issue there? And I've got one more question. So, I'll let you deal with it.
Your Worship, that's a series of good questions, and I, too, was making notes as Mr. Shore was speaking, and I will try to answer as best I can at this point. If Eric or Jonathan or work more closely with the applicant have more specific information, I'd welcome them to jump in. Around the creeks, yeah. Counselor Asmussen is correct. It is part of the development process. The applicant has a qualified environmental professional, which is a registered biologist, does an overview, inspection and assessment of the subject lands. And in that, and again, based on the repairing areas regulation, which defines what a water course is or is not, they go out and they, you know, walk the property and make sure that, that they identify all qualifying water courses. Now, there may be some drainage channels, and that's perhaps what Mr. Shore is referring to. We will want to follow up with Mr. Shore afterwards, just to find more precisely where these potential drainage channels are. And I think I've heard that reference before relative to the city's reservoir site. I think Mr. Shore is kind of for counsel on that matter, too. So, again, that's something we would want to follow up with him and engineering and feed that back into the subdivision design. I guess my observation around that was, there may be, and I'll come back to the water courses that the QEPs identify, but there may be, particularly on a hillside, parcels this large, there may be intermittent drainage channels that occur, especially when you get the rains that you do up in the northeast. And that may result in water, you know, and debris flowing down the hill and onto Mr. Shore's property and the other lands there. With development, if supported by council, that's one of the things that would be dealt with, because there is drainage control through the, you know, the roads and storm sewer system and lots and grading and that. So, presumably, that would help alleviate those specific problems. But we will make note of that and follow up. In terms of the water courses, you're quite correct, the QEP would do that identification, what sort of standard or class that water course is, and what would then be the resulting spi, you know, area that would need to be set aside, dedicated, protected to protect that water course. In addition to that spi, and based on the city plans, there has been a park dedication that runs parallel to that. So, there's area for, in time, for people to use the trail and stay out of the spi. I'm not sure, I don't believe that we're taking the park dedication this time, but it wouldn't be the trail construction at this point because it's just, it's a segment. It's just, you know, it's one link in what'll eventually be an overall system. Oh, and the creek crossing, yeah. A couple of things there to note. Just looking at the lot layout or the road layout with the coming off Dayton, the two cul-de-sacs sort of back up against the repairing corridor that cuts across the, sort of, the northwest side of the site, those are clearly intended to minimize the number of creek crossings. The balance of the lands, and Mr. Shore pointed to that as well, they're sort of north and west of the main subdivision on the subject property, remaining the RS2. They're there, they're being held to some point in the future when they can be developed in conjunction with the neighboring lands, so you can get access without crossing those water courses. The one water course is necessary for a crossing if this project was to go ahead is the one at the southeast corner, and that would, again, be based on the QEP's investigation and assessment. There'd be some sort of large culvert or some sort of crossing of that area. There would need to be some compensation for the impact to the repairing area with that road. But those are necessary at some point in time, and there's mitigation that's provided for that.
Well, that'd be no different than some of the David Avenue and Burke crossing over the creeks, same type of clear span structures protecting the water course, things like that.
That's correct. Where, you're building and developing on a mountainside, there's, there will be those implications. You try to avoid them where it's possible, and where it's not possible to not avoid that, there would be mitigation or minimization of the impacts.
I guess I would say, and to Mr. Shore's point, I guess, he has some concerns, rightly so, about cooperation with the developers around him, even the city, and not getting, so I would, I would strongly recommend through some part of this process that if this is to be approved and moved forward, that the city and the developer work with Mr. Shore and get Mr. Shore involved in the protection of the drainage issues from this site that, because he's head, as we know, as he's been here, from the Morning Star site, from the pump station in there. And I can understand his lack of faith in another development causing issues. I think he's already feeling from the pump station that there is, we were talking earlier about water issues from that site pooling up and entering into his driveway now, but it'll probably be alleviated when it's finished. But I do think that there needs to be some, working with Mr. Shore through the development company to alleviate some of his concerns and design a drainage protection thing for their property as it goes forward. And the last question is, I would assume once again that the implementation of a manhole in an area of a fisheries was done by compliance of all regulations and standards that he was mentioning in the October season, at that bottom corner of his property and the water course.
Your Worship, on that point, again, not aware of the specifics, but certainly, when those sort of works are being done, it is done during the fisheries window typically, when you're, there's minimal impact on the water courses. If it's work that's related to city infrastructure, our environmental services department, or environmental services division within the engineering department is very closely involved with that to make sure there's nothing goes awry. If those drainage works are extending out into the city's road system, we are ultimately responsible for those works, too. So, we make sure that it's not done without the necessary approvals. Just getting back to the comment of around better communication with the neighbor, Mr. Shore, and I've made note of that, and I'm pleased to see my colleague from engineering, Joseph, is here this evening, because it involves a lot of his staff as well, along with the other planning staff. So, that would be the commitment. We take that as direction from council. If the application, the zoning is supported by council to proceed for, we will want to work with the applicant to ensure that there's that, you know, that necessary communication between him, his consultants, our various engineering and planning staff. So, everyone's on the same page, and if there are some, some issues, let's get them dealt with.
I hope for that, because I do think Mr. Shore has been impacted. He's not against development, but I think he just wants to be not impacted the way he has been in the past. Thank you.
You, Counselor Reed.
Just for, so, for now, regarding access, they're just getting, they've got access how into the building park?
Your Worship, that's correct. With this proposal here, it takes the road access, the collector road from Dayton that came up to the Morning Star development, and it carries that on northward, and you can see-
So, is that built now?
No.
Not that far up?
No. It ends at the, I think there's a turnaround, a hammerhead at the north end of the Morning Star project. So, no, this would be constructed if, if supported by council. The other thing you'll see, you go up to the second cul-de-sac up there, there's a dashed line that carries on to the north, because that's one of our responsibilities when we're looking at developments like this, that it does provide for that, the potential for access to lands beyond. And so, we need to make sure that people aren't being landlocked with development that goes ahead at this point in time.
I understand that. And the other thing on page eight, as Counsel Nicholson so nicely pointed out, it was about a little tributary that staff confirmed that the existing tributary crossing at Coast Meridian works. So, I don't know if that's one of the ones that he was discussing, but that was news to me. I just want to talk for a minute about item lots 122 and 23 that are right along this spi there. And like everybody else, I don't want to see this coming back with, I think it's probably good to let the developer know if this goes through. I don't want to see a whole bunch of variances on this. I mean, we're right next to a very environmentally special area here for Hyde Creek. And of course, we have the hatchery down at the bottom, right? Or Port Coquitlam does. So, I mean, this is a pretty important water course for us. So, I don't want to see a sun deck hanging over the creek or something. So, I'm not looking for a lot of variances when this comes back. And no fishing from the sun deck, yes, as Counselor Secours says. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
My name is Ron Marr. I'm the land development manager for Townline Ventures, the applicant. Several issues have been raised in the previous speakers, and I'd like to try to address them as quickly as I can. The first speaker had mentioned the, made reference to Hyde Creek. Hyde Creek is actually off of our site. It's to the north of our site. We do have two tributaries, Tributary 2C, which is the long, thin, one on the- We do have two tributaries, Tributary 2C, which is the long, thin, one on the, sort of, the west side of our phase, and then a small Tributary 5, which is an extension of the realigned and reconstructed creek that was done on the Morning Star property. So the previous speaker was concerned about Hyde Creek and protection of the water course and all that kind of stuff. That is actually a nod on our land. We do have some banks and repeat slope, but we do not have the actual water course, and that's why it's not showing up on our plan. There was reference to the issue of increased density and lot size. These lots are approximately 25% larger than the minimum lot size under the zoning. They are fairly generous. They are wider, they are the RS9 width, they are not as deep as the RS9, but they still are 25% larger than the minimum lot size for the RS8 zone. Under the Coquitlam RS8 zoning, the house sizes are basically fixed, so we have, will have bigger yards and setbacks and backyards than the typical RS8 zone, because of the nature of the size of our lots. We do have a couple of awkward shape lots, but I believe that typical houses can be built on those with no problem, so I do not anticipate any variances coming back on that score. We do anticipate one variance coming forward, which is to allow triple car garages on three lots. This is one of the many things that we discussed with staff about trying to solve street parking issues, and it is an option to actually try to improve that situation. So that was something that, if council supports, we would do to add a few extra spaces. Another issue is, part of the amenity package that we have created is that we will be dedicating approximately .6 meters. This is in addition to actually paying the 5% cash and lieu. That .6 acre park is a trail along the east side of Tributary 2. It is one of the reasons why there was a bit of confusion, you know, the RS9 did not add any extra, or decrease the extra lots. That land area is somewhat into the trail, the park system, and is part of our compensation. We also have done several improvements, or will be doing several improvements to the creek channel, ultimately changing it from a non-fish-bearing creek into a potentially fish-bearing creek, and that will be adding a lot of benefits to it. One of the future things is also talk of a replacement of an existing culvert that's not even in front of our property, to improve the fish-bearing capacity of the stream. So a lot of improvements, a lot of benefits are coming. If you'll notice, the Morning Star Development to the south of us did a major realignment of that Tributary 5. It benefited them, they got a lot of extra lots that they wouldn't have had. We are, on our property, have protected the existing channel, and we will be extending it actually a little bit above what it was is currently flowing, and supplementing and creating some base flows, but that will be part of the development in the urban reserve area, because that's where it's located. Within our property, that tributary is like a one foot wide and one foot deep. We do have a full, complete crossing. It's got a DP water course issued by the city. It has ministry environment approval, it has DFO approval for that work to be done. It was part, that road Dayton crossing of that creek was all part of the Spiling Creek neighborhood plan and proposed road layout. So all this has been, we're just following what has already been discussed with the environmental bodies. Again, a bit about the density, and sort of taking orders that people were raising, one of the things is, we are mirroring and copying what Morning Star did, a development which I understand many council members have expressed comments about how well it was done and how good that subdivision looks. We will be doing the same lot sizes, same kind of densities as they have done. Next issue that came up was talking about street parking, concerned about the east side of Dayton Street. If ultimate design, we have pre-plans for the adjacent area dependent upon the Burke Vision Plan, obviously, but we've had to consider road grades, crossings, locations of driveways, road profiles, to make sure that the entire site works. What you see in there is just Phase 1. The whole site has been planned to make sure that Phase 1 doesn't mess up future potential and any, cause any negative problems in the future. We anticipate only one driveway. You will notice on the street parking plan, there is a gap on the east side of Dayton. That's where the driveway is anticipated to go, and that's the only new driveway that would interfere with any kind of street parking, and we haven't counted that location. You're concerned about the adequacy of street parking. We have calculated that this 30 lots will generate 5.3 parking places per lot. We've got two in the garage, two in the driveway. We have numerous parking spots on the street. Unfortunately, the municipal standards for what is a legal conforming street parking spot is pretty onerous. You were talking about how some of these gaps look like they could have a parking spot? They do. In real world, they do. We've got 13 and a half meter minimum frontages. Subdivisions with 12 meter frontages have detached driveways or not paired driveways, but separated driveways, and they have street parking spots between them. We have more room than what you see elsewhere in Burke Mountain for those spots, but they do not comply with your buffers between driveways and the parking stall, and so they don't show up. So we have approximately 19 non-conforming parking spots that are not showing up in your plan. And so there was concerns about, you know, some of these parking stalls being away from where the homes are. Well, there are spots in front of every home that anyone parking there is largely going to be a resident of that house, and if they have problems with, you know, lacking the buffer to their driveway, it's themselves that we blame for how they park in the street. So there is quite a few parking spots. We do believe, we have assessed other neighborhoods, other street parking plans, and we believe that we have done as well or better than practically any other subdivision in the Burke Mountain area. We also anticipate that our homes will probably generate fewer street parking requirements. I'd like to draw your attention to the Walmart project across the street on Scotch Pline. I drove that this, again, this evening at 6:30 at night and drove through it. There are very few cars parked on the street. We are very similar width sizing, price point type of neighborhood, and it's not a problem in that development. It's not a problem to the south, in the Southview project by, below Harper, a little bit of parking around where the townhouse project is. But even there, they have 12 meter wide lots, and there isn't a lot of parking on, in front of the houses needed, but there are parking stalls and they are used occasionally. There was a question about the issue of pairing driveways. We do have steep slopes. It does cause major design problems. It's not just a marketing issue. It is retaining walls, it adds to retaining walls when you've got two driveways so close to each other, going into two houses, and trying to make that transition as you're going down the slope. It is a major challenge. In discussions with the staff about trying to increase the number of parking spots, we did pair up a few driveways where the slope and grades were such that we could make that work. The catch is that in that process, we increased the conforming parking spots by two. Through that process, we reduced the non-conforming parking spots by four. So it actually is sort of a catch 22 here. We've actually reduced park, real-world parking spots, but the plan looks better. So I'd be happy to go to non-paired driveways and return those parking spots, but we have tried to find that compromise with staff about making this work best all around. So more pairing will actually probably cause more problems. It certainly will cause design problems, we know that at these grades. There is a question about fisheries work and the timing. The work was all done, approved, we had a DP water course. It was inspected and monitored by a QEP, a qualified professional, municipal staff, and the environmental services were monitoring it. It was done during the fisheries window. Mr. Shore mentioned two unidentified creeks on our property. As was discussed by staff, we did have qualified environmental professionals walk the entire property and do an inspection. Municipal staff have done creeks and municipal backing. These didn't, these channels or whatever did not show up. I was not personally involved in the project back last March, I believe he mentioned about this washout, so I don't know that personally. I became involved in June in the summer. But I have walked along that southern property line. I have not seen any kind of creek channel or anything there of that nature. When we do our servicing and our grading, the drainage systems, the improvements, the lot grading, the rope, the catch basins, all that stuff will capture most of this water and divert it to the appropriate places. If there was some kind of a washout or flash flood or in high storm events coming down that channel, it will be intercepted. It has changed already. Morning Star has completely developed their subdivision. There is a retaining wall along the southern edge of our property. So if there was a channel, we'd be all watching a waterfall coming off of our property on to that. There would be washouts within the Morning Star project. Again, I've been on their site many times. I have not seen any washout this, and we've had some pretty heavy rains in the fall. So if there was a problem, it will be taken care of, or if it hasn't already been taken care of by the Morning Star project. Mr. Shore also talked about the trail. Yes, there is a trail, and it is part of a network, and it's a short section. It does lead into his property. Ultimately, if he develops it, then presumably he would complete that. Whoever develops his property would complete that. However, he has a chain link fence along the property line. We did not remove that chain link, even though it's actually physically on our property. We've left that in place. So when the trail gets built, until it's ready to be extended by Mr. Shore, whoever purchases property, it will terminate in a chain link, five-foot chain link fence, and will not cause people to trespass on his property. The ultimate plan is to have a footbridge go across the creek to allow connection into the Coast Meridian area. The exact location has not been shown on the plan, because the exact location is somewhat dependent upon the development on the other side. Development on the other side is somewhat dependent on working with the neighbors, all of which we've attempted to do. Mr. Shore did mention that we had talked to him in the past. I had called him before that fisheries crossing and the pipe was taken across to let him know, to offer to meet with him, to discuss opportunities and timing and any concerns he would have about the construction, because it is a fairly congested little spot and adjacent to his property. His response was that we should stay on our own property and that we were entitled to remove that chain link fence that was on our property. So we have left that chain link fence, and we did try to accommodate his... He did mention, he sent an email to staff about a problem about drainage during a heavy rainfall, and within a couple of days, we had crews out there repairing any issue about how the asphalt had been flared and devolved, and they redid, worked that. And I believe the potential problem that occurred in that heavy rainfall has now been corrected. Again, staff, municipal staff have been part of the whole process and were well aware of it and supervised all this work. I guess that's it. I think I've hopefully covered all the issues that have been discussed.
I know your five minutes is up.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
I was going to let you keep answering, because there were lots of questions raised, and I've got Counselor Hodge, Asmussen, and Wilson. Counselor Hodge?
Yeah, you answered a lot of them. I was happy to hear about the parking, and I agree that people, I prefer to refer to it as creative parking, but the non-conforming, and I get that completely, and I, it's one of those, if it's, the resident doesn't complain, then we're fine. So, so I'm good on that. But what I want to know about is the, you mentioned that the creek is now going to, has the potential to be fish-bearing. When I walked and walked over the site, and this, I guess, is the western tributary, it goes down, it follows Coast Meridian for, I guess, about, you know, 20 yards, and then it goes underneath Coast Meridian, and it just sort of spills down into the ravine. Is that the culvert that you're referring to?
Yep. In front of Mr. Shore's property, but yes, that's the culvert. That is a major barrier. There's two culverts within our property that we'll be removing, but that's the theoretical barrier to fish passage.
But that, it goes under Coast Meridian, so it's on, I guess, a city easement. Is the plan to then lower it so that instead of having a waterfall, that it's actually level and...
That's the game plan.
That's the plan. Thank you.
Other question?
One more from Counselor Asmussen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your answers. That's, that's been helpful for the issues that raised, and I just encourage you to be in constant contact with your neighbors as construction, as you seem...
Always available. He has my email, he has my phone number if any issues comes up.
That's very good to hear. I'm pleased that you came and answered a bunch of questions. I just wanted to, you talked about non-compliant parking, and I understand that 13.5 meters are a lot wider and there's different issues there, and I thank you for that. But when you say non-compliant, is that a meter short, or is that parking right up to the letdown? I'm just trying, when you say we've got 19 non-compliant, it...
They're 30 feet long. Somebody should be able to park in a 30-foot spot between two driveways.
Oh, they should be. I'm just saying, I'm, all, my question is...
But they are short, they are shy of the standards. I think you currently want like a six-meter parking stall with three meters on each side. So that's...
There's three meters, yeah, from either, either letdown.
So you need at least 12 to 13 meters, depending on the rules that you're applying, to have a conforming spot.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure when we talk about the 19 people, I just wanted to get some clarification.
But those 19 are the minimum of 30 feet, so they're pretty big.
Yeah, but they're not right up against the letdown, that's what's...
Sorry?
They're not parking up to the letdown. I mean, your area is 13 point, 13 and a half on average.
It's 30 feet between each driveway typically.
Yeah, typically.
So that's what they've got to park in.
Yeah.
So if they're driving a really big car like you drive, maybe...
No, it'd be you, Mayor Stewart.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Wilson?
Thanks. I really appreciate your answers. This, actually, maybe not a question for you, more for the staff. I wasn't around when the Morning Star development was approved, and I just was wondering, is it common to divert a creek like that?
Your worship, it's not common, but it's not unheard of. And it more depends, in my view, on the standard or the quality of the water course. If a major creek, like, you know, the main stem of Hyde Creek, you wouldn't go anywhere near that. Some of the smaller ephemeral tributaries, there have been instances where they have been realigned, and in doing that, they're actually upgraded or enhanced as more supportable fisheries habitat in repairing areas. So I do recall that. In this case, the alignment was more regularized, but it was then set in a restored or recreated natural environment, if you will.
And when that gets done, does that have to be approved by DFO and...
Yes, there is the involvement, the environmental agencies, a little bit less these days, because the senior governments aren't quite as closely involved, but there are processes they need to go through, particularly at the provincial level. If you get into certain changing water courses, there's provincial permits you require. We have a process, a sort of cooperative process through our environmental services area along with our development services group and development planning staff to make sure that the necessary research and design and evaluation is done, and the senior government environmental agencies, when they can and when they do, comment, do get involved in those things.
If I may make a comment, I wasn't there before the project was done. If I may make a comment. I wasn't there before the project was done, so I didn't see it, but my understanding is that creek was pretty degraded and in poor quality. There is no question that no money was spared on that project. They spent a lot of money upgrading and rebuilding that channel. They did a lot of work along Harper, improving the street, the ditches and the creeks along the Harper Road. I think that trade-off was a good net gain.
Right.
So, you know, yes, they did realign it, and we've chosen to maintain it, but it was a good deal, good for the environment.
That's good to hear. I guess the question for you, we have the three-meter requirements between the letdowns. You build houses all over the Lower Mainland. What is a common requirement in most municipalities?
To be honest, I do not know.
Okay.
It's rarely an issue. We've done many developments with small lots and frontages. Street parking is, it's never been an issue. We haven't heard of it. We haven't had to demonstrate it in other municipalities to the same extent, so quite honestly, it's never come up.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
I'd just like to clarify two things. One, the construction on the southeast, southwest corner of the creek there did not go without problems. There was blocking our driveway. There was even at times trespass. That being said, I do want to identify, and if I can use this once one more time. I do want to identify the positions of these manholes because that's what was most contentious. These manholes are in direct line with where the stream should go. If you follow the path right along there, the manholes are right in the way. So if somebody, that stream comes down at an angle and then veers off to follow the road allowance. Now, if they were to realign it, which Morning Star did in their property, but they did it drastically, this would be just a shift of about four or five meters. I think Councilor Hodge indicated that, that that would align the creek properly with the road. But now there are two manholes right in the way of that. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? As he comes up to get a piece of paper, it's not him. Is there any other speakers to this item? Saying none, I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. We'll spend a couple of minutes rejigging the electronics, and we'll convene a council meeting. Actually, we'll spend-